This is a call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, March 20th, the order. If I can ask everybody to stand and please decide the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
It's okay, everyone's here.
You're here?
Here.
Hey, I'm here.
Here, he's here.
Alex Dellicamp.
Here.
Pat Gertie.
Here.
Scott Lewis.
Here.
Karen Lonsdahl.
Here.
Okay, everybody's here. And we have what I think is a very routine agenda tonight. I have nothing in particular to highlight tonight, so we'll have our reports from our student school board reps, superintendent's report, we'll open up for comment, public comment, three minutes or less, please. We'll review and approve the consent vote agenda. We've got a number of updates on program and personnel, brief update on facilities and finance, nothing on property, anything else you know?
Yes.
Okay. IASB just?
Yeah.
Okay, so two brief updates there, and that should be it. Very routine agenda. Okay? Let's start with our student school board reps.
All right.
Okay, so pardon my voice. I was in Springfield at the IHSA debate tournament. So at the debate tournament, LHS had their best performance in history, which was awesome. Claire Mills was an octa-finalist in varsity LD. Megan Mullins and Alex Duffy were also octa-finalists, but in varsity PF. And Chandra Baster and Aloe Garcia Escobar were quarter-finalists in varsity PF. And also Libertyville was the only team in the state to qualify for the all-academic team award, which was really cool. And then also, this past week at LHS and the upcoming week, students are able to sign up for the Apple Test, and they can qualify for by literacy, which is really cool. You can put on your diploma and use it when you're applying to college. So just a test that we take on our late start for two weeks, and yeah, based on the scores, you can qualify. Additionally, LHS had their, with the HHS, had their best buddies prom. LHS has a huge best buddies population. They recently had a St. Patrick's Day party, and they published an awesome Spread the Word to End the Word video. And they were selling shirts outside the cafeteria all week last week, and everyone could sign a banner pledging not to use the R-word. Additionally, LHS is finalizing plans for our color run, which is going to be on May 6th. We've decided to donate the money to Gigi's Playhouse, which is an awesome organization. It is the only nationwide support system for children with Down Syndrome, and it provides specialized education and training programs, which is awesome. Student Council voted on four well-deserving charities, and this one went out. Additionally, Spanish, there's a Spanish field trip tomorrow, and they're going to the Museum of Mexican Art, and they're going on a mural tour, which looks really interesting. Additionally, there have been field trips for AP Lit to the Chicago Shakespeare Theater. Finally, since March is Women's History Month, posters of inspirational women around the school have been hung up courtesy of our Advocats for Gender Equality Club. And our display case features posters of an impactful woman for, uh, woman, excuse me, for every letter in the alphabet. And X is the women whose names we don't know, which is a really cool way of incorporating a variety of different role models.
March and April is a very fun time, especially as a senior figuring out college and all that. Also fun, because Girls Benman had its first-ever meet against Warren. I was watching it, it was really cool. I knew some people on Warren and Libertyville though, so it made for some tough spectating, but it seemed like everyone was having a really fun time. There's a campaign at Libertyville to promote the fact that students can be both involved in music and sports, whereas in middle schools, it's often hard because they're often both extracurricular. So there are posters, you know, with like a bowling ball and a choir folder and a tracksuit with a trumpet, stuff like that. It's, we had International Language Week at the end of February, beginning of March, and it wrapped up with a pinata in Spanish, some constellation building in Latin, and a performance from Aloha Chicago. I could hear it from my English classroom, but it was completely welcome. It sounded very cool. It's very cool to see the emphasis focused on languages. We don't hear too much about Hawaiian, for example, and we had videos throughout the week of, you know, sign language and yodeling. So that's very cool. Writers' Week is coming up after this anxiously awaited spring break. Students submitted work, professionals will be coming in. We're going to see some write club bouts where students go head-to-head, teachers, other faculty go head-to-head with some persuasive debate. Then, jujuju, for example, roots versus branches, dogs versus cats, things like that. At our WISE concert, we had, or WISE competition, sorry, we had four qualifiers for state, Albert Tu, Allison Tong, Siraj, not going to try that last name, and Carl Gardner. And we also had the student-directed One-X this last weekend. It went very cool. There are always technical glitches, but it's always a really fun time. Very laid back. And in our acting studio classes, they took a field trip to Actors Gymnasium. If you've never heard of it, I suggest looking it up. It's very cool. They do stuff on silks and crazy things that are showing up in a lot of modern theater these days. That's Libertyville this month.
Hey, can I, can I make one comment? That, that basically music is a team sport?
Yes.
That is phenomenal. Okay, I've been in marketing in my job for a long, long time. That is one of the coolest things I have seen, period, more or less in high school. That was, if you haven't seen the poster?
Very cool.
And it is.
It is. All-inclusive, and spreads, and spreads the wealth in a big way. I just thought, I saw that, I'm like, holy cow, who came up with this? That blew me.
The fire and everything.
Yeah, right here.
Super cool.
Who came up with it?
Dustin did it?
Snaps for Dustin.
I'll give him the snaps. If you haven't seen it, it's.
Yeah, it's very cool. There's a big one up in the main office, too.
Well, and I, I think where to take that to? It's great schools. To get kids involved in music earlier, it's the cool thing to do. It's, you know, it's very, it's very good. So kudos. That's all I have. Thank you.
So Vernon Hills, we also were, participated in the WISE competition, though it's actually this past Friday, the sectional competition here. And Vernon Hills got second place in our division, and we had many individual medalists. And we'll be heading to the state competition at U of I on April 19th to 20th, so we hope to bring home more good news. And also, we did something really fun for Pi Day on March 14th. Obviously, we had student volunteers and math teachers put together an extravaganza in the foyer. And we had pool math games, solving math problems. We sold pizza, and we had prizes. And it was the first of hopefully many more to come. In the fine arts, we also have upcoming the North Suburban Wind Ensemble Winter Concert, and that was actually on March 14th, sorry. And we have, we had Bobby Black, a sophomore tuba player, play the Tuba Concerto Movement I, so that was pretty cool. And we also had a first class lesson, and this month it was #VHGiveBack. So in this lesson, we tried to get the handle #VHGive, #VHGive trending on Twitter. So I don't know if we necessarily were trending on Twitter, but we did have a lot of tweets throughout the day. So it was really cool to click on the hashtag and go through and see what people were posting. And this is actually continuing. On April 5th, the juniors will be taking the ACT. So on this day, VHGive has kind of asked everyone to take this day to give back and to our community through different ways, and we've looked at a couple websites. So we also have another senior actville who will continue her lacrosse career at Carroll University next fall.
All right. So Junior Nicole Sledkov, through the course of many selection and training camps, was selected by the U.S. Rhythmic Athletic Selection Committee to be a part of the U.S. Rhythmic Gymnastics Senior Group National Team. So I talked to her about it. She said, at this level, the team is sent internationally to compete and represent the country at different World Cups competitions and Grand Prix Games. The three-week trip will begin with Nicole and her team traveling to France and competing against 12 other countries at the Grand Prix. Then they'll fly to Marbella, Spain, to train at the training base there. And then the final week, they'll fly to Pesaro, Italy, and compete at the World Cup, which again includes countries from all over the world. Last time, we talked about the Cultures of Islam that our Muslim Student Association had created. And I talked to the president, Hibba Ahmed, who is very nice and very cool. And this is what she had to say. She said, "The purpose of the Cultures of Islam event was to shed light on the universality, universality of Islam and to show that the religion doesn't just pertain to one group of people, but people from all around the world." And then the club, the club's goal was to educate the public about Islam as a religion, but also the, to raise awareness to the civil war in Syria. And NSA raised $600, over $600 for the Syrian American Medical Society's Aleppo Fund.
Continuing on that great news from Vernon Hills, the grand opening of the new Makerspace named VHMakeIt, actually located in this exact room, you can see the banners up there, opened earlier this month with its grand opening, outfitted with a 3D printer pen, a sticker printer, programmable toy robots, and much more. We just can't get enough of it. So thanks to the D-128 Foundation for Learning Innovation Grant and parent volunteers, we hope to inspire more creativity among our students with these new creative outlets. So it's going to be a blast. In fine arts, this Saturday, we, D-128 hosted its annual solo and ensemble festival here in Vernon Hills High School, where band, choir, orchestra, and guitar players performed solo works and chamber music. And they did a really good job scoring some high, high scores and overall great performances. Also, our turnabout dance was last month, and I got a chance to talk to our school president, Nikki Mordeick, and I got some great information about how, about the success of this dance. This year, there was more than 480 students showing up, which is a substantial increase in numbers compared to our other winter dances over the past four years, which, before that, we had our previous turnabout. So it was great attendance. Also, simultaneously with our turnabout season, we had, we raised money with the Relay for Life fundraiser, and Student Council raised over $800 by doing a change-for-change competition, which was a small, friendly competition between the classes, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior, to raise some money for this event. So overall, the student body really enjoyed turnabout and Spirit Week for it, and we can't wait for future dances just like this.
Is that it? Great job. Okay, thanks, everybody. Enjoy spring break. Okay, superintendent's report.
Okay, first of all, some more good news. Thanks, as always. As Pat said, to our students for great reports on everything that's going on at both of our world-class high schools. Always exciting to hear. Thirteen VHHs students received the March Ellen Swick Cougar Class Act Award. Congratulations to Woo Suk, Sam, Antonio Brown, Jordan Krasner, Samantha Gilfend, Rebecca Getlin, Jessica Tardzkowsky, Alexander Wang, Christian Zurzo, Daniel Lester, Annabelle Hernandez, Corey Cotton, Luke Brady, and Colin Turley. The following sophomores were named LHS March Students of the Month. Jack Gerard, Ashley Pignoni, Sadie Iyer, Kyle Yunkins, Kevin Segru, Eric Leroy, Lena L. Cohen, Jose Mendoza, Evan Hill, Jack Maroka, Emily Malowski, Thomas Pearson, and Katie Zurich. VHHs boys bowling coach, Bill Spigner, has been selected by the United States Bowling Congress to be one of the Team USA Coaches. Spigner, a USBC gold coach since 2000, has been teaching bowling for nearly 40 years, and has been on the Bowler's Journal Top 100 Coaches list since 2006.
I'm going to chime in. He's a great coach. Got personal coaching from him. He's, he's amazing.
And you would know that, Spencer, I mean seriously. A coaching specialist for IEB, he was the head teaching pro for the professional bowling camps for more than a decade. He has authored more than 300 instructional articles and has written a pro approach for Bowler's Journal since 2008. As a bowler, the USBC Hall of Famer won three PBA national titles and nine regional titles. So congratulations to Coach Spigner. On Tuesday, March 14th, Scholastic Art Awards at the national level were announced. Congratulations to the following three gold medal regional winners, who were also recognized on Tuesday at the national level of competition. VHHs senior, Sophia Ufa, was awarded a silver medal for her drawing and illustration mixed media artwork, Bird of Thirds, Birds of Thirds. LHS junior, Alice Hubbard, was awarded a silver medal for her photograph, Pixilated Reflections. And LHS sophomore, Annika Borklam, was awarded a silver medal for her photograph, Light Switch, Postiche. VHHs science teacher, Josh Ravenscraft, will return for a third year as an AP Physics Reader, which I believe is on the national level. VHHs teachers, Amanda Carroll, Sean Kevir, Shannon Ettnier, Brandon Waters, and Chris Wolf, recently presented at the ICE Conference in St. Charles. They presented the following sessions: Game On, Interactive Slides for Gamification, Waters and Ettnier, Near Pod Workshop, Wolf and Waters, and 20% Time, Carroll and Kevir. D-128 Student Activities Directors, Debbie Beagle and Jennifer Ulix, teamed up with Highland Park High School Activities Director Lisa Friedrich to represent the state of Illinois and present at the California Association of Directors of Activities Conference. CADA, C-A-D-A, is the nation's largest support network for activity directors. Ulix, Friedrich, and Beagle presented on student engagement, identifying the uninvolved and the value of a positive school climate. They were among 1,700 directors of student activities from around the country, meeting to learn and share best practices in improving education for all students. The LHS mock trial team competed at the 13th Annual Lake County Mock Trial Tournament at the Waukegan Courthouse. Four students earned individual awards in their final tune-up before state competition. Senior Olivia Fordham and sophomore Ali Coleman won Best Witness Awards, and sophomores Annie Ryan and Andrew Klein won Best Attorney Awards. The VHHs math team finished in second place at regionals and will compete at state on May 6th. Special congratulations to Alexa Pomerantz, who finished first among all students taking the geometry test, and to Oliver Leon, who placed second among all students taking the pre-calculus test. Both eight-person teams placed first, and the junior, senior two-person team, Akash Sedi and Anma Perande, took second place. Other standouts included fourth-place individual finishes for Esther Ka, Anma Perande, and Akash Sedi, who I think we know. We know someone like that through the same name. In fact, I think his dad's even here tonight. LHS Academic Decathlon finished seventh at the Academic Decathlon State Competition, held Saturday, March 11th at Northeastern Illinois University. LHS has placed in a top-tennis state every year since 2000. The opening reception and award ceremony for the Illinois High School State Arts Exhibition was held last month at the Zhao Bi Art Center in Chicago. More than 100 schools from all over northern and central Illinois were part of the show, submitting more than 500 pieces of artwork which were exhibited in the gallery. Each piece of artwork was eligible to receive awards and scholarships from only over 40 universities and colleges, as well as prestigious art schools from across the nation. Students chosen for the honor of representing LHS were Christina Hu in mixed media, Paula Babarski in drawing, Amanda Fan in design, Jake Rodolphy in photography, and Shannon Long in ceramics. Christina Hu and Shannon Long were both awarded summer early college program scholarships to the New Hampshire Institute of Art. Paula Babarski won the gold medal in drawing, which, which equates to state runner-up. The award also includes a $200 monetary award. In addition, Paula was awarded the Rising Star Award from the Savannah College of Art and Design. Only two such awards were handed out to students for more than 500 works of art at the show. Pretty impressive. The LHS Science Olympiad team qualified for the state tournament March 11th at the College of Lake County Regional Tournament, placing second overall. And so in the addition to the great news that our students shared, congratulations to all of our students. Next up on our agenda is School Finance 101, and very quickly, and then I just want to highlight a couple of slides from the longer presentation moving forward. We had our second School Finance 101 on Wednesday, March 15th, at the Village Hall at Vernon Hills. We had about 10 or 12 individuals from the community show up for that presentation, much like our first presentation. We went a little bit over two hours with good dialogue back and forth with the constituents who came to the meeting, and once again, we got good feedback. The third and final School Finance 101 this year will be held on Wednesday, April 19th, at Village Hall at Libertyville. We want to thank the Village of Vernon Hills, and in advance the Village of Libertyville for allowing us to use their boardrooms, so we can take our show on the road, so to speak, moving forward. So we just wanted to highlight a few things. So we pulled a few slides out just for the general public that may not make it to the School Finance 101. And this is kind of a combination of School Finance 101 and what's happening or could happen at the state. We've spent a lot of time talking about the potential two-year property tax freeze. We have been working with our sender districts, so Oak Grove District 68, Libertyville 70, Rondout 72, and Hawthorne 73 are collecting the same kind of numbers so we can get an idea of what the impact would be in our kind of high school sender group in our area. But first, we've had Jan sharpen the pencil again and dig down in the numbers a little bit as we went through this again. So if we were to take a two-year property tax freeze as part of a grant bargain or as a standalone bill in this legis, this particular legislative session before it ends on May 31st, rough, our, a pretty close estimate for FY 218, 2018, next year, would be right around $1.9 million in revenue that we would not collect. And then for FY 19, it would be about $3.8 million. So our total cost, or total of non-collected revenue due to the property tax freeze would be roughly 5.7. Now, as the other districts calculated those numbers, and I've shared those numbers with the board, for our area and our sender group, it's a little bit over $11 million if you factor everybody's two-year property tax freeze in. So if you want to calculate an impact, to go to Pat's point that he's made several times, if you want to calculate an impact, our reported total teacher cost or staff cost from the Illinois State Board of Education, that's everything in, you know, salaries, benefits, everything, is $102,000. So if you take that 5.7 million and divide 102,000 into it, you will get a calculation for the number of full-time equivalent teachers, for example, or employees in the district that that would impact. When you do that for the $11 million, each district can do that, we would have a total number of FTE that could be at risk in districts unless they had other alternatives during that two-year period. So again, it's just a knowledge point, and as we pointed out to people as we go through budget preparation, we're really going to have to do kind of Plan A and Plan B, because we don't know what the effective date would be for the law if a property tax freeze was passed. The second piece is a pension cost shift, and we spent a lot of time talking about that as well. And this is based on Speaker Madigan's original plan several years ago, in conjunction with some of the other pension reforms that they were talking about. The state would be seeking to send back to the local districts what they call their normal cost of pensions, and that has been estimated to be about 6%. So the original plan a number of years ago was to go 100, 0.5% or half a percent a year for 12 years to get to 6%. And so you would absorb additional costs, you know, over the years. So you can see in FY 18, it would be 200,000, but as you run that out 10 or 11 years, you can see the cumulative effect of that in the run-up. And then once you get to 6% under that plan, then it's going to run roughly $2 million plus on our employees every year beyond that. So then you're able to do, you know, a larger cumulative calculation. So what has been discussed more recently with the pension cost shift would have the most impact of schools in the Chicago metro area, let's say the six collar counties, probably the city of six collar counties, because the threshold that's been put out is $150,000. So anybody that has, you know, earning a salary over $150,000, then the district would have to pay that cost. So that would mostly affect the districts in our area mainly because of the higher cost of salaries driven by a number of factors being in a larger, more expensive metro area. So obviously, we'll be monitoring that very closely. So those are two things that we've touched on here a number of times over the past few years, as the budget discussion, or lack thereof, continues in Springfield. Bo, you can move us to the next one. Okay, the other thing that we've spent some time on is property tax abatements. Again, we talked about that a number of times at the board table here, but we want to reinforce that again with the public. From tax years 2011 to 2015, five years in total, the board abated approximately $18.6 million to taxpayers. And in our language, abatement means that we didn't collect taxes, okay, that the district could have under existing Illinois state law. A big part of that, roughly $15.5 million, was an abatement on our bonds that people were paying as part of their yearly taxes. And the district has determined to use reserves to pay those off. And so when you add that and about a $2.9 or $3 million rate reduction, okay, at the end of the day, you're looking at about $18.6 million in property tax abatements. And as we've said several times, and we've seen no information that would change what we're saying here, based on our knowledge, it's the largest single property tax abatement by a taxing body in Illinois. So that was done by design and after a lot of discussion with the board. And as Pat explained at our last 101, the intent there was not so much rate-driven, but was to have our obligation, our tax obligation at the end of that five years on your tax bill roughly be what it was five years before, and then it would gradually go up unless we have a property tax freeze. The point of property tax is always to remember is that regardless, we don't have a property tax freeze, we are capped at CPI or 5%, which is, whichever is lower. And CPI has been historically lower in the last few years, just now starting to go back up. Okay, Bo, we can go to the next one. Okay, just a quick budget summary again. This is for FY 17, or the 1617 school year. Operating budget from property taxes and revenues, we brought in roughly $81,800,000. Our expenditures were right around $84,200,000. So we have roughly an operating deficit year-over-year of $2,400,000. And again, it's important, it's important to know that this has caught, many districts are wrestling with the same thing, because the majority of the cost of a school district is a service business, is salaries and benefits. And so that's 70, 70 to 75% of any school district's budget. As a result of salary increases and benefit, benefit costs rising higher than the revenue we're able to take in, as a result of the property tax caps, it creates kind of a structural operating deficit, which we've been working on with the board. Additional expenses paid from the reserves, not current or future property taxes that, that have been allocated, but do, are not part of our normal operating budget, would be $6.2 million for our final bond payment. That's coming from reserves, and $8 million, which is, was allocated this year for the LHS swimming pool. And it is highly unlikely that we will use the $8 million on the pool by the time June 30th comes and our fiscal year ends. So we'll recalibrate that calculation and obviously kind of move forward into the next fiscal year as we begin to do more substantive work. Okay, Bo, I think we have one more. Two more, maybe a couple more. Okay, reserves. We've had a lot of conversation about reserves, and we spent some time on this in 101. So if you look at 2017, it's just kind of shaded in blue, you will see our reserves excluding early taxes, okay, are about $64,500,000. Now, you look in 2016, and they were $81,000. Okay, so we've taken a million, we've taken bond payment, okay, and the allocation So, we've taken a million, we've taken bond payment, okay, and the allocation for the swimming pool, even though we haven't spent the $8 million out of that, you can see the run rate kind of going down there as we lay in, in the line for LHS pool, 8 million, 10 million, and 3.5 million to get us to the 21.5 million for the pool. Bo, can you go to the next slide? Okay, these are reserves with a property tax freeze as we know it. If it's a two-year straight property tax freeze, you can see 17, the numbers are the same at $64,500,000. But as we project to 18, okay, the curve goes down because we may have to use some reserves to offset the property tax freeze. And that would be a discussion that the board will need to have moving down.
That's if you don't do anything.
That's if we don't do anything, right. Yep, so, that's a good point, Scott. So, a couple of things about reserves. Part of the run-up of the reserves in this district and other districts was the real estate run-up before the real estate crash in 2008 where we were capturing lots of property value that was new growth in the district, like what you, what used to be HSBC's corporate facility out on the tollway, which is now AVI, I think, if I'm not mistaken. Yaz, what was our high point for new growth roughly?
About 50, 60 million.
And what have we been taking in the last couple of years?
Seven to 12 million.
Okay, so, seven to 12 million versus 50 million, and we have an opportunity, one time shot, to bring that on the tax rolls, obviously. And so, that goes part and parcel with the very long and detailed discussion that we had about abatements and whether to do abatements and at what level to do them at. Bo, let's see what's next. Okay, well, Renaissance is next. So, those are just a few highlights of the many slides that we cover and the information that we give and the very interactive conversation that we have with whoever is the audience, you know, coming forward. Yes, I skipped over that one, so let's thank you, Pat, for reminding me I had that in the wrong order. Okay, we're going to go back up to number two for a minute. So, up on the agenda for approval of the board is 2017-18 IHSA membership renewals. We have to do this every year to continue our membership and our state governing association for athletics and student activities. So, our recommendation is that the board approves our continuing membership in the IHSA and the funds to solicit the membership, make the membership happen.
I have a question that we approve the IHSA.
Second, any discussion? Roll call. What are the funds? How much is it? Do we know?
Scott, I don't have that in front of me. Yaz, do you remember what the fees are for the? Hang on one second. I'm sorry, we should have had that. So, Paul Park, what's it been before Yaz, do you remember? For school.
Yeah, I'm not questioning because we're not, we're going to do it. We have to do it. I'm just curious what they are more than anything else. That's fine.
Sure, yeah, we'll come back to that.
Because we pay for both schools?
Yes, we have to, yes, they're by members. And as you pointed out, Scott, if we want to participate in Illinois, we have to be part of IHSA, so. Okay, so, we'll get you those numbers. So, yes, we'd still like to have approval because we need to do that, and then we'll let you know what the number is. I'm not sure she can find it. Okay, why don't we go ahead and do the motion, Ellen, and do the vote, and if we, we have the number, then we'll go in. Any other discussion? Okay.
Roll call.
Arthur?
Aye.
Cassius?
Aye.
Noah, Tyler?
Aye.
Blue?
Aye.
Bunstead?
Aye.
Noor, aye.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, we are on to Brainerd Memorial. Mark, you want to give us an update on the Brainerd Memorial?
Okay, I met with the village about the Brainerd Memorial. Requirements for approval of the memorial, our final design of the, for the memorial will have to go before the village Parents Review Commission. And second, the placement of the memorial requires a 50-foot setback from the property line. So, we're presently finalizing the memorial design and our placement options at the west end of the property at Brainerd. Once completed, we will present that, our, our final presentation to the Parents Review Commission.
Okay, any questions? Okay, and as we go through these processes like Brainerd, the Brainerd property, and the Brainerd Memorial, and then the LHS swimming pool, and some of the outside-the-pool improvements that we're going to do, remember now under Illinois state law, we used to work through the Regional Office of Education, and the law was changed two years ago that as, really as a result of the situation with the bleacher construction at Crystal Lake. So, with, with not communicating with the village, so the law was changed for the state, and all school districts are now required to go back through their local municipality. So, we have to go through whatever structures that they've set up normally to do that. And as always, we'll be seeking to work very collaboratively and collectively with the villages to streamline the processes as much as possible and to reduce the fee structure as much as possible as well. So, just another note on that. Okay, last time, we want to take, next few minutes, we're going to take a piece of what we call the kind of the District 128 Renaissance. And if you recall, last time, we talked about the mission and vision and expectations for excellence across the organization. And tonight, we're going to talk about focus a little bit, and we're going to talk about the future and how we continue to keep ourselves in a position in the marketplace where we are anticipating and preparing our students for the future. So, just going to run through the slides very quickly, not even going to go back and talk about them, but mission statement again. And what we want to talk about tonight is that we believe the collective focus over the last, you know, 15 years or so in the district on all students growing and achieving it at higher levels. And the planning for that and use of data to drive and make our decisions so we can meet the needs of our students has resulted in those terrific student achievement gains over a period of time. So, focus is very important for any organization. So, we're all on the same page, and as we're planning, we are all moving toward the same endpoint and expectation. And once again, that has been one of the highlights in District 128 is our collective focus on all students growing and achieving at higher levels. But we want to take a couple of minutes and talk a little bit tonight for those folks in the audience about research and development at the school level, or R&amp;D. So, our R&amp;D is always looking at innovating, and we have to do that with purpose. We can't hope that it happens. We have to cause that conversation, if you will, to happen. And Rita Fisher, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, has done a phenomenal job with our future R&amp;D that you're going to hear more about in the coming years, but she's going to do a few highlights tonight.
Thank you, Prentice. So, as Prentice said, by all traditional measures of success, D128 is an excellent district, and our students are well-prepared for their post-secondary futures. So, one of the things that we ask ourselves is, first, how does an excellent district continue to improve? But more importantly, why should we consider changing any of these practices that have earned us the well-deserved reputation that we have and the success that our students enjoy? So, we're going to start kind of with the why, and then talk a little bit more about the how, and provide some updates on some of the work that the innovation team is doing. So, so the why innovate, I think, is a really important question to consider. And it's, it's one that when we look at traditional measures of success, when we look at our performance on ACT, and I'm sure our future performance on the SAT on April 5th, we see that we're doing very well. When we look at our participation in AP courses and our success rate on AP, those traditional measures tell us that we're doing very well. But the reality is, the measures that we use to determine our success are changing as rapidly as the world is changing, right? So, colleges and universities are wanting to see different things in their, in the application process, and they're asking different things of the students that come to them. We always say that we're preparing students for a world in which we can't even envision the, the jobs that they're going to be engaged in. And I think it's even more true that the students of tomorrow, our students today, will not just be in jobs that we can't envision, they'll be expected to invent or create those jobs that they'll be doing, right? They'll have to find their own way and figure out how to fill that next best need. And so, what are we doing in our classrooms to help prepare students for that changing world? How are we kind of future visioning those measures, what they'll be, and, and planning backwards to ensure that our students are ready to face this changing world? That's the why, and the how is really related to this innovation team that we've begun to work on this year. We joined together early this year with a team of 65 educators across the district. We met someone, some of them at a meeting earlier this year. They're teachers of all disciplines, they're building and district administrators, and their charge was to simply do research and development, as Prentice said. From those initial large group meetings, we formed ourselves into six working teams that are studying implementation of strategies in classrooms today that are happening, you know, with our students as we speak, and as well as innovations and strategies that are undergoing multiple iterations and have a timeline that's many years, you know, several years in the future. So, those six teams are studying topics through a process of design thinking. So, many of you are familiar with the Stanford Design Schools Method of Design Thinking. We start with a process of empathizing with our users. So, what are the needs of our students today? What do they tell us about how they learn best, about what engages them most in learning, and about their needs for the future? What does research tell us about what students need? What can we glean from districts around us and some of the innovations that they've started over the past years? So, we start that first process of kind of figuring out what is it that we want to innovate? And then, we formulate a design question, right? So, we, we turn that into a how might we question? And that's the phase that we're in now. These six different groups have six different how might we questions, and they're exploring those questions with quick prototypes, the things that we can do now, things that we can do in the future to make sure that we're on the forefront of the newest measures that our students will have to succeed at. So, by using design thinking, we've generated a number of how might we questions. One of the groups is looking at the Global Goals for Sustainable Development. Since they were adopted in 2015, teachers across the district have been introducing them to students, have been connecting learning to the challenges that the world faces. How might we eliminate poverty? How might we ensure clean water for everyone? How might we ensure that gender equality? So, we're looking at these 17 different goals and individually kind of attaching curriculum to them in an authentic way. This team decided, wouldn't it be cool if district-wide, we selected a goal that we all focused on for a year? And so, they're planning, how might we have a district-wide global goal? And how might we help teachers in, in easy ways attach to that goal? Clubs and activities who are doing service projects perhaps attach to that goal? And how might we include students in deciding what that goal might be? They presented at X and generated some enthusiasm around this idea, and so, you'll probably be hearing a lot more about the D128 global goal next year, and catching authentic learning experiences to that goal. A second group is looking at how might we incorporate service learning opportunities into our curriculum. State law demands us of this in our government courses in the upcoming years. There's a service learning component of a required civics course, so some are looking at it from that perspective. We know we have service learning through many of our extracurricular activities and organizations. We have a group studying, how might we use some blended learning strategies and some other ways to connect what we're doing in our classroom to moving students beyond the walls of our classroom and into the community in the curriculum as appropriate. A third group has asked, how might students benefit from a later start time? Those conversations were happening outside of the innovation team over the last couple of years, and you know that that's happened in districts surrounding us recently. That topic is actually moving out of the innovation team and into a study group in the coming weeks that will explore this question district-wide for 128. The fourth group, this, this is where we're seeing the changes kind of immediately in classrooms as teachers collaborate to, to discuss the how might we design student-centered, personalized learning approaches. And if you look really closely, I think that's Aparajitha in one of those pictures down there, and maybe in your government class, is that you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it is. But, so we have, we have teams of teachers who are looking at project-based learning, who are looking at problem-based learning, and who meet regularly to collaborate and design lessons together and provide feedback to each other to try out new things in their classroom and to explore these opportunities together. We know that, we hear that, you know, this is a project-based world, and what the, what, you know, businesses are looking for, what universities are looking for, are students who connect their learning from various disciplines and to create something or make something or manage something, right, with all of that learning. So, our teachers are kind of looking for ways to do this more intentionally in the curriculum through the innovation team and their, their meetings. We have a summer course running this summer as a pilot, Real World 101, where students who sign up will engage in project-based learning connected to something that they decide they want to study with a problem attached to perhaps a nonprofit or a community group. So, we're experimenting with our summer school program to play with some of these ideas around moving students beyond the classroom into the community and collaborating with organizations outside the school. Finally, we have, as a fifth, well, this isn't finally, this is the fifth, sixth will be finally. Our fifth topic of conversation is one that relates to many of the other groups, and it is, you know, how might we move learning beyond the traditional spaces of our classroom? Is that by reorganizing our classroom? Is it by being intentional about how we use the various parts of each of our school buildings to provide ways for students to collaborate on design projects, to have spaces where they can connect virtually with the community or with partners across the globe, right? So, how are we setting up these spaces for our students so they can achieve this kind of learning? And then, finally, is our prelude to the April meeting where you'll hear from some of our innovation team members who are really excited about a framework that we've named D128 CREATE. And this framework is a way of thinking about how might we provide personalized pathways for students through our curriculum with classes that are intentionally designed to provide the acronym CREATE, learning opportunities for our students in which they're doing this kinds of hands-on community work in their regular courses, and they're building throughout their high school career a portfolio of evidence of this kinds of deeper learning that they can use to share in their college application process, they can use to discover themselves and to understand their mission for post-secondary pursuits, and to explain themselves and their qualities to others who might be interested. So, we look forward to sharing this concept with you. This is our prototype right now. It might look different when you see it in April, but we're very excited about it, and we're very excited about the opportunity for the team to meet and, and the ways that they've been able to meet as a result of the formation of this team. It, it almost never happens that I attend one of these meetings where at least one or two or three of the members don't say, we're so lucky to work in a district that values research and development, that this gives us this opportunity to collaborate together and to think about the future for our students. So, I'm, I'm sharing that thank you from them to you as well.
Questions? Well, just Rita, great job, thank you. Just a couple of closing comments on this. So, we know this, as successful as we have been at assisting students in, across the learning spectrum in growing and achieving at higher levels, if we do not continue to innovate, then we will not continue to produce those kind of results over time. So, this really fits into mission and vision when you think about strategic you think about strategic planning, or what we would say, School Improvement Planning 101. So mission, vision, broad goals, any one of these would fit under our existing broad set of three goals. And in fact, most of these would go across all three of those goals at some level. And then the development of measurable objectives, strategies and activities, a way to measure if we're successful, and then looping that data back into future planning, and either amplifying or course correction of what we're doing. So we're very excited about this, and we think this is really fundamental to the continued growth of our district as measured by students growing and achieving at a higher level. So really great work. Very organic, very grassroots, very diverse staff involved in the discussion. And I've had a pleasure to sit in a couple of the wrap-ups in, in the different groups. And the level of excitement among the staff members here is palpable. I mean, you can really feel it. It's, it's really cool. So again, for those of you in the business world, this is our continued research and development and looking forward. And so it's very exciting. So Rita will be reporting out with teams of folks this year and next year over work that they're doing, and we'll see where that takes us.
I just, again, want to say I'm really impressed by not only the quality of the work that's been done by the team, but their more aggressive timeline even than any of us envisioned, that they would come up with some of the ideas and be ready to act on them. So it's, it's been really exciting, and we can't wait to share more of the details with you.
That's awesome.
Can I make a comment?
You have to wait for public comment, Anand. Okay, then you can make your comment. Okay, we're almost there. Okay, thanks. Okay, any other comments from the board? Okay, real exciting stuff, real, real happy. Thanks, Rita, for great work in facilitating and leading. Okay, we have one FOIA request this month, and as the board will remember from last month, the Illinois law changed in January, and we're now required to read in the Freedom of Information request. We had several requests from board members last time to estimate the number of hours that we spent on the request. So we've done that for this particular request. It's from Bob Hollenbach at 801 East Algonquin Road in Arlington Heights. He has requested a list of any and all vendors that contract with the school district to operate school bus transportation services for academic years 2016-17. This should include each vendor name with a number of rocks operated in a contract term. All current contracts a school district has with Durham School Bus Services, also known as Durham, Septran, or National Express, or other transportation companies to perform transportation services. The most recent RFP documents issued by the school bus trans, issued for school bus transportation in the district, including any related documents made available to the public or prospective vendors, and any attachments, agenda, addenda, revisions, guidelines, instructions, questions, and answers, or similar documents. Also, actual dollar amounts paid to any school transportation company during the school year and summers of 2015-16 and 2016-17, and current to date for pupil transportation, summer school transportation, athletic event transportation, and field trips from any school within the district grades K through 12, as well as any preschool or after-school programs. This can be in the form of year-end cumulative accounting and/or budgetary reporting. A list, complete list, and description of any and all budgetary account codes used when distributing funds to any of the above companies for any transportation services, copies of lists of all certified employees from any of the above companies used for student transportation within the district, copies of any and all contract infractions or violations involving any of the above companies, companies of any and all safety issues and fractions or violations involving any of the above companies, and finally, copies of any and all accident reports involving any of the above companies. Yasmin Dada and Rose DeCicco worked on this FOIA. The response deadline was 3/16/17, and we responded on 3/16...
Six.
3/6/17, I'm sorry, and responded on 3/6/17. And the time spent on, estimated time on this FOIA was 3.5 hours. Okay, next, we have one donation acknowledgement. This is to the Goodman Family Foundation. Attention, Mr. Mike Elkins, and it is to, we'd like to acknowledge the receipt of the $6,000 grant received from the Goodman Family Foundation in support of the drug and alcohol prevention programs at Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High School for the 2016-17 school year. The grant was received in two payments, dated September 8, 2016, and the final payment was dated February 14, 2017. So certainly a worthy donation. We're very appreciative of that. And finally, I do have one other tonight that's somewhat timely, we'll be putting a little bit of information. As the board and the community may be aware, next year is the 100th anniversary of Libertyville High School. That's very exciting. And given the exciting and historically significant Libertyville High School 100th anniversary next year, we have received a few requests from LHS alumni to move their 2017 homecoming game against Mundaline High School from Friday night to Saturday night to mirror, Saturday afternoon, to mirror homecoming games of yesteryear, and also to alter several other traditional homecoming-related activities. We love our LHS and VHHS alumni and certainly encourage all LHS alumni to return home to LHS for next year's centennial celebration activities. However, we do want to make it clear that the current LHS administration staff, and most importantly, the students, have the responsibility for and authority to plan their homecoming activities, just as 99 previous LHS classes have had the opportunity to do so. LHS administration staff and students have determined and are already planning for the homecoming football game to be held on Friday night, the parade on Saturday morning, and the dance on Saturday night. Homecoming activities are building decisions and not D-128 board or superintendent decisions. The D-128 board superintendent will not get involved in LHS or VHSHS homecoming activities decision-making. At present, D-128 Director of Communications, Mary Todrick, is facilitating an internal planning team. And when that group completes its initial work, there will be a number of opportunities for alumni to plug into the planning process for the 100th anniversary-related activities. As we do everything in the district, all planning work will be done collaboratively, and as required, will be subject to D-128 board allocated resources to plan and carry out those centennial activities. Again, we love our LHS and VHSHS alumni, and in this case, we have board members like Scott Lewis and his wife, Karen, and district administrators like Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Rhea Fisher, who are LHS alumni themselves, and other D-128 board members and staff who are either LHS alumni themselves, or who have had children who are LHS alumni. That also includes me, who has one daughter who is an LHS alumnus and a current LHS junior daughter, who will be an, an LHS alumnus in the near future. And we all look forward to celebrating 100 years of excellence at LHS with all alumni, supporters, and friends, as we respect and support the wishes of LHS administration, staff, and students regarding the planning of their homecoming activities. So Pat, with that, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody from the public who would like to speak, please state your name and address. For the record, in limited comments with three minutes or less.
Tim Anderson, 821 Bartlett Terrace, Libertyville. The last two meetings, I focused on the subject of what I call bid rigging and bid string. Is this microphone on?
Yeah, yes.
I focused on bid rigging and bid stringing, which I think is a very serious issue. I know the board apparently disagrees with me that bid stringing and bid rigging went on. My understanding, the board's position will be on the bid stringing, that those three projects that were given out, those three contracts, just under $25,000, were done because of scheduling reasons of when the students could be out of the room so they could do it. I don't think that will hold the test of time, given they were just under the $25,000, and the winning bidder, Hill Ahern, who had done the work, knew that the whole project had to be bid. It was clear from as soon as you started this, that all sprinkles had to be replaced because they were under a recall, a recall that was done 15 years before the project was done, and eight years before the board even knew about the redemption. The point of the bid rigging is pretty easy to identify. The bid letter, bid notice was on May 4, the bid meeting, and only two people showed up. The bid response had to be in by May 12. That was an eight-day window for the two people that attended the bid meeting to make their bids. One person that didn't bid, Chicago Fire Protection, thought it was too constricted. Eight days was insufficient information from the walkthrough. What troubles them is they now realize that the winning bidder had already been in the building for one year prior. The first project that Ahern worked on, Ahern-Hill, was in June of 2015. So they had an 11-month head start, and they knew the scope of the whole project. That's not a fair bid. The whole bid process is in equal footings. No one gets an advantage. So the one that didn't bid had eight days to get their bid in. Hill had over one year to work on their bid. That is bid rigging by definition. So it's up to the board to deal with this. Other people will deal with it, but the board has to respond. I think it's very clear, four individuals from the business office were involved in this bid rigging. Now it's up to the board to decide what they want to do about that. Thank you.
Now, just give your name and your address, okay?
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Anand Sethi, 371 Sycamore Street in Vernon Hills. I wanted to especially commend the team that's working on the Renaissance. What I've seen in the industry is, this is the type of thing that we want to have our children learn. And what I'm seeing in the colleges when I visit is the same thing. They want our high schoolers to bring that type of talent in. And I want to go specifically on a couple of things that were cutting edge, is the design thinking. So this is something that the industry has started embracing, and I know a company that trained over 100,000 of their employees on that, on bringing that type of proven technologies to really help us, our children, is going to be, is really wonderful. I wanted to bring that. And also, you know, helping children create portfolios so that whatever they're done, they can actually see a result of it and taking it forward. I think that's remarkable. So I just wanted to bring up a couple of points that I saw were really cutting edge, and that is what is needed to really create in the next, you know, future citizens who's going to take us to the next level. So, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Pat, let me make one connection. Anand has also joined the foundation in the last year, District 128 Foundation for Learning. It's great to have him as a new member of the group and to bring his expertise and energy. But to connect the dots here, our District 128 Foundation, for over 10 years, has been supporting innovation grants through that individual teachers apply for. I think they're well over $200,000 now in the amount of grants that they have provided teachers who are innovating. And those grants, as Scott will attest to, and Karen, who are also on the foundation with us, phenomenal. So we've already been doing some of that outside-the-box work, and the foundation's position in this is they support activities that enrich and enhance beyond what the school district would normally do. So they've been a great partner in this process, and so thanks again to the foundation, and we look forward to working with them as this, and the board as this project develops.
And Akash mentioned even tonight that We Make It, which was a foundation-funded initiative as well, so.
Okay, Pat.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the consent vote agenda which is listed. Can I ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Batsin.
Hi.
Delly Polly.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Louis.
Hi.
Longstead.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
All right, motion carries. Program and Personnel Committee Chairperson Mauer.
Okay, we have a few things. First thing we have is the 2017-18 amended contract. We pay for six spaces. Typically, each year, we can always get more than we've done. There was a 2% increase in costs, bringing the total of $37,644. Looking for a motion to approve that for next year.
I will go approve the 2017-18 amended contract.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Delly Polly.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Louis.
Hi.
Longstead.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batsin.
Hi.
Delly Polly.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, we have the 2017-18 amended school calendar. We're amending it because we got to date for the FATs, which is state testing, very nice. So we're looking for a motion to approve that as presented.
I move to approve the amended calendar as presented.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Rudy.
Hi.
Louis.
Hi.
Longstead.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batsin.
Hi.
Delly Polly.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, we are looking at 2017-18 annual staffing recommendations. Prentice, you want to...
Okay, I'll do, and then we'll let Al jump in. Paul, could you pull up the last slide for us? Okay, just wanted to review this again, and then we have one more slide that really captures some of the work that we've done in this area to continue to, to chip away and work at our operating deficit of $2.4 million. So Bo, you can go on to the next slide now.
Okay, so several things that we've done. If you recall again, about 70% of our budget is staffing cost, which would be salaries, benefits, any IMRF payments, those types of things. And so we have worked together through the staffing process, really over the last two years at district office, and over the last three years with our staffing team here to really look at the staffing process and see how we can better maximize class sizes moving forward. So there are several things that go into this. First of all, over the last couple of years, we have reduced four full-time, three full-time and a part-time position at district office, or four positions. We did that through retirements and attrition. One individual took another job with a larger school district. We're not replacing that person. So that estimated savings from those four positions is a cut of $324,000 roughly. In addition, through the staffing process, over the last three years, we've reduced 4.8 FTE, that's full-time equivalent. And this year, the staffing team at the buildings and then at district office reduced an additional 3.4 of FTE. That's 2.8 FTE in our general education staff and 0.6 FTE in special education. Projected savings from those reductions will be about almost $347,000. In addition, we have several retirements in the district this year. Dr. Fleming will be retiring, Mrs., yeah, Mrs. Dada, and then also Dr. Scott, and the employees that we will bring in to replace them will yield us some savings, although we would be happy if the three of them would decide tonight in public to stay longer moving forward. It's a little harder in Marina's position because we just, we just hired her replacement. So that one, we'd have to scratch, I suppose. The other thing that...
You're out.
Yeah, the other thing that, so you do get to go after all, Marina. So the other thing that, Kelly Hartwig is our Director of Special Education, really done a great job since she's come to us from 211. She has looked at the needs of our special education students and our CEDOL contracts, and we've been able to reduce some CEDOL contracts to, CEDOL again is the Special Education District of Lake County, our cooperative, of almost $56,000. So our total projected FY18 savings is roughly $900,000 on the staffing end. Now, that's, that's incredible work, a group of people, to really look at efficiency. Hats off to our remaining staff at district office. Those four positions represent about 20% of our district office staff. All of that work that we're required to do on behalf of the board for the county and the state of Illinois still has to be done. And other employees in the office have picked up those...
All of that work that we're required to do on behalf of the board for the county and the state of Illinois still has to be done. And other employees in the office have picked up those responsibilities, and they already had full plates, but we thought it was really important that as we started to look at reductions that we looked at district office first, because we've said this repeatedly, the rubber hits the road at the buildings where we are interfacing with students, so we just wanted to note that for the record. The three-point-four reduction has really been done through tightening our staffing efficiency and our class sizes moving forward. Not an easy task, it's always a challenging task, but you can see over the last three years, a four-point-eight FTE at about the same number of students, because our enrollment has been pretty level over the last few years, that that's pretty impressive. Now, put on top of that, that our established class size, our optimum class sizes, they're not maximum, but our optimum that we work with the union, for our advanced placement classes and our honors classes are smaller than regular class sizes. So as we double the number of our AP classes, that's required more classes, right? Because there are less students in those classes than there might be in an Algebra One class at twenty-eight, twenty-seven, twenty-six, depending how the scheduler runs. So part of what we talked to the board about at committee meeting last Monday is this is staffed very tight, and we have not run the schedulers yet. So the scheduler never matches up perfectly with the numbers on the paper. Once we start dropping kids in slots and we start accounting for conflicts, we can usually work a lot of those out by hand, working with the student and their parent, but we suspect this year, since we are so tight, that we are going to need some, there may be some putback here, a little give-back. So once again, as I have for the twelve years I've been in the district, as part of the staffing recommendation tonight, Ellen will ask for one-point-oh FTE contingency for our regular ed staff and an additional one-point-oh FTE for our support staff. We've rarely had to use that in the past, but it allows us to, for example, if we have thirty-two kids, we run the scheduler in an Algebra class, we have to break that class up because we're over, we're well over the optimum there, and that requires another section. So we would have to wait another month to come to you to be able to do that. Whenever we use contingency, we always report that out to the board as part of the staffing function. So as we look for a motion tonight to approve the staffing report, we just wanted to do this as an overview, show you what we've done together toward, you know, deficit reduction moving forward, and maybe some longer-term savings, and we'll continue to look at, you know, where we can be more efficient. So I don't know if anybody has any comments or questions beyond what we talked about last Monday, but... Okay, Al, did I miss anything there? Okay, and I really do want to thank...
You guys...
Yeah, I really do want to thank Al, who really facilitates the district process, Rita working with him, Marina and John at the building level. Those are tough, those are tough discussions for principals to have, and they've done a really good job of working with their assistant principals and their department supervisors to try and make us alternate efficient moving forward. So yes, they did a great job, and they should be commended for that. We're really appreciative of that.
Okay, so looking for a motion to approve the seventeen eighteen annual staffing recommendations. This discussing committee.
So moved. Any discussion? No, roll call, please.
You have a second.
I thought it was a second.
I said, so moved.
Oh, my mistake, okay, sorry. Okay, thank you. All right. Jim, second.
Thank you.
Sorry, I broke down a second. All right, any discussion? All right, now roll call, please.
Longstead. Aye. Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batsen.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Loos.
Aye.
Longstead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, and then we have the two thousand seventeen eighteen annual employment recommendations. We've got continuing employment recommendations, honorable dismissals, and non-renewals. So we're looking for a motion to approve those as listed.
I move to approve the employment recommendations for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batsen.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Loos.
Aye.
Longstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, then we have employment of employees, and we have some requests of part-time status, leave-of-ab absence, and coaching, extracurricular hires. Looking for a motion to approve the employment of employees as listed.
I move to approve the employment of employees as listed.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batsen.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Loos.
Aye.
Longstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Facilities and Finance Chairperson Batsen.
Thank you, Dr. Rudy. Jim, before you go, I have the answer to the hot financial question. Oh, okay. On the IHSA membership fees, the reason there are no dollars is because there are no dollars. The membership is free, as reported by LHS Athletic Director Bryant Kelly.
I always thought there wasn't a fee.
According to what...
Can I ask a really stupid question?
There are no stupid questions, but...
Oh, sure there are. How did they administer all their administration stuff now?
They get their money from vendors, from ticket sales.
State series tickets.
That's enough for all their overhead.
There used to be fees.
Yeah, no, I thought they used to be.
Brian said there hasn't been any fees for over ten years.
So the board for IHSA is a principal-driven organization, so they have a board and an executive director and a staff, and they make decisions much like you do as a board, but for the IHSA. So obviously, some personnel on the way, they looked at their bottom line and said, "We're healthy, and as we have done in our conferences before, we're healthy and we don't need to levy fees right now." So that's a great place to be in, but that is the answer to the million-dollar question, which is why I didn't have a fee with my motion, so... But now we all know that. Okay.
That's pretty impressive, actually. Okay.
Yeah, no. Okay.
Yeah, back to the Facilities and Finance Committee. We have a couple items here. The first is an update on the LHS pool construction management contract. Do we have any further information on that? Yes.
Yes, we are on our fourth review of the contract between two legal firms, one for liability side, one for the contract language and Gilbain. So the contract currently is with our main firm, who are looking at the language changes that were made, and hopefully, we should have it all resolved for you to approve relatively soon.
So the flying ointment, so to speak, for this particular meeting is the liability carriers' attorneys got involved in review, and they wanted to make some changes, so...
Yes, there were five pages of recommendations of language that we needed to change or add or delete, so obviously, that has to be reviewed by Gilbain's attorneys, too, so...
Okay, how is this affecting the pool progress?
Not at all. We keep meeting. We've got substantial places we still need to go, things we need to do, but our meetings continue with the number of participants that we have on the committee as well as the architect and Gilbain, so that continues.
So Gilbain, just to summarize, Gilbain is continuing to work with us as we're working through the contract.
Right.
Because two or three months ago, you approved their hiring pending the contract, so...
So things are...
So the good news is we're still, we're still able to continue conversations to move ahead.
That is right.
No, I just think it's important, too, as we go continue through this, like we did at the committee meeting last week, we started putting out projections of breaking ground, key milestones as we move forward, and I think, not only at the committee meetings, but at these meetings, to report progress towards those milestones will be important for everybody for full transparency to see and make sure this thing is moving.
And it is our intent to have Gilbain and SDR present at every committee meeting to give you updates on where we are, so...
Okay. Any other questions, comments on that? Okay, we have a motion, or proposed motion for masonry restoration projects at both Libertyville and Vernon Hills High Schools, along with a recommendation here. I will note that there are six contractors that submitted proposals for this. Couple were withdrawn, but we had quite a few contractors looking to bid on this.
Correct. We have a proposed motion for the board that the board of education accept the Libertyville High School base bid number one for two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars, Vernon Hills High School base bid number two for two-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars, and Libertyville High School alternate number one for a hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars from Grove Masonry Maintenance Incorporated from Alsop, Illinois, and the combined total amount of six-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars for the Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High School two-thousand-and-seventeen masonry restoration projects. Some other background, we've worked with Grove in the past, and we've been very happy with the work that they have performed.
Could we have a motion, please?
Sub moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments?
That'll take place over the summer.
Pardon me?
Does that take place during the school or over the summer?
During summer, summer project.
Anything else? We have a roll call, please.
Batsen.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Loos.
Aye.
Longstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batsen.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Loos.
Aye.
Longstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batsen.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Loos.
Aye.
Longstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batsen.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Loos.
Aye.
Longstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Facilities and Finance Chairperson Batsen.
Thank you, Dr. Rudy. Jim, before you go, I have the answer to the hot financial question. Oh, okay. On the IHSA membership fees, the reason there are no dollars is because there are no dollars. The membership is free, as reported by LHS Athletic Director Bryant Kelly.
I always thought there wasn't a fee. I thought it was...
Can I ask a really stupid question?
There are no stupid questions, but...
Oh, sure there are. How did they administer all their administration stuff now?
They get their money from vendors, from ticket sales.
State series tickets.
That's enough for all their overhead.
There used to be fees.
Yeah, no, I thought they used to be.
Bryant said there hasn't been any fees for over ten years.
So the board for IHSA is a principal-driven organization, so they have a board and an executive director and a staff, and they make decisions much like you do as a board, but for the IHSA. So obviously, some personnel on the way, they looked at their bottom line and said, "We're healthy, and as we have done in our conferences before, we're healthy and we don't need to levy fees right now." So that's a great place to be in, but that is the answer to the million-dollar question,